Is 6:10 or 1 PM, 1 PM, 1 PM or Adam? I'm very tired and I apologize. Consideration of medical carrier change from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield with the PPO Navigator and B consideration of dental carrier change from Delta Dental to Ameritas. And we have our human resources team and more. Come on up, please.
Hello, I'm Pam Samak, Human Resources Director, and I'd like to introduce you to Arandi Campbell. Campbell. I'm apparently tired, too.
We were in the same place last night.
Who is our Senior HR Analyst and our Benefit Specialist. And she's going to introduce Alliant and answer any of your questions.
Hi, my name is Arandi Campbell, Human Resources Analyst. And my primary duties within the HR department include the Benefit Administration section. So I'll be doing the quick introduction and Alliant is here to present the item. I want to thank them for coming here today. I know it was quite a drive from the Bay Area and they have been a tremendous support over the years when it comes to health benefits. They keep us really in compliance with all rules, regulations, and there is a lot of work when it comes to health benefits that's done behind the scenes. So thanks. So the Benefits Committee comprised of various members from our union, reviewed our healthcare benefits, and after extensive analysis have voted on changing from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield with the PPO Navigator program. And what the Blue Shield PPO Navigator program, they have a new program called Accolade. And Accolade really replaces that traditional customer service section and made it more of a member concierge, meaning employees are able to call Accolade directly, schedule appointments, get recommendations on whether where doctors are located with more cost effectiveness. There would be no rate increase if we do change from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield. We also reviewed our dental plan and the Benefits Committee also wants to transition from Delta Dental to Ameritas. And over the years, we've seen a lot of deep increase in dentist providers that are falling out of the Delta Dental network. And Ameritas has a unique way of paying the dental, the dentist directly. So currently employees are having to pay upfront for those services and trying to get reimbursement through Delta Dental. So Ameritas would actually pay the dentist provider directly. And they do this neat thing where it would be a 90th percentile of usual and customary fees. So the dentist will get that nine, what nine out of 10 dentists are paying for that particular service. So there is a rate increase of 0.3%, but Delta Dental is 0.9% for the renewal. So now I'll pass it over to Tom Shear and Chloe Smith.
Okay, hi there. My name's Tom Shear. I'm a benefits consultant with Alliant and had the privilege of working with the county since 2010. You all are part, purchased these programs in collaboration with other cities and counties through the PRISM Joint Powers Authority. Used to be called California State Association of Counties, EIA, so it was CSAC EIA. They have a fancy new name. Part of the, of our role is to figure out solutions for members of this program, whether they are urban, rural, semi-urban, wherever they happen to be located. And challenges of access to care are pretty common outside the major metropolitan areas. The way PRISM is trying to address this and the biggest health plan in the state, CalPERS, is following our lead starting in January, is to offer a program that gives additional support to your folks to find care and makes additional virtual care options available. There's two parts, the agenda on Slide 2 there. We're going to talk a little bit, there you go, about the medical and dental options in the materials that went out in your packet. There's a lot, there's the data that's in the appendix, which gave a lot more detail about, you get an app that has all the information in it. There's a lot of additional information. And I'm going to let Chloe take the next part.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Hi, everybody. My name's Chloe. I'm your Account Executive. I work closely with Tom and very closely with the Benefits Team day to day on all your benefits here at the county. I've been, had the pleasure of working with the county now for about six years, ever since I've been here at Alliant. And today, what we're going to talk about first to give you a little context about the health plan renewal over the last few years before we get into some of the changes that are being recommended. So what this chart shows is the renewal rate history over the course of the last, you know, 15 years back to 2011. And the across, starting from the left to the right, you can see Lake County's specific renewal increase percentages over the years. Next column is PRISM Health, so that's the joint purchasing program that Tom mentioned that the county currently is a member of and purchases your health and dental and life insurance through. The third column is California PPO Trend, which is essentially medical inflation, so the cost year over year to deliver healthcare, that's what that number represents. And the last column is CalPERS, which is a kind of a benchmark for public sector clients. So you can see at the bottom is really the long-term average. So really the benefit of being a part of one of these joint purchasing pools is you're able to have sort of long-term stability, the lowest cost, the lowest administrative fees by being a part of this program with 41,000, 43,000 other employees participating in the health program and 45-ish other cities, counties, and special districts that you're a part of this program with. And then you can see PRISM Health, their average is 5.6. So within the PRISM Health pool, there's members like Lake County get, can get a slight adjustment over what the pool recommended increase is based on your specific claims history. So if the, if the county's claims history is running better than the pool, you can get a decrease, a lower rate than the pool, which you can see, for example, in 2017, the county got a negative 0.3 versus PRISM Health was 2.4. And then you can see this year in 2025, the county actually got a higher increase based on the claims experience within the county compared to PRISM. And then, you know, the, as I mentioned, the bottom line is really the overall average. So you can see that you're able to have, increases are hard. Obviously, we don't want to discount that any increases is an increase and it's a cost. But to be able to be, you know, be lower than PPO Trend, which is medical inflation, is a good thing. So that's the benefit of kind of being part of this pool. And then you can see CalPERS PPO is about 6.7%. Their increases are not final yet for 2025, so it says pending there, but the PPO plans are increasing this year at 10 and 12% depending on the plan. And then this chart gives you an overview of the, all of your health plan renewals. So as I mentioned, the 9.3% is for medical. Dental, as Arandi mentioned, is just under 1% if you make no changes, slightly less if you go with the Ameritas option that was recommended. And then VS, the Vision, Life, and EAP are all not changing rates this year, so there's no rate impact there. And this chart, so gives you an idea of the cost for the employee. So down at the left column, you see 0000, that's the employee's portion of the premium that would need to be paid. So in January of 2023, the county was able to increase the health plan contribution towards employees to 1,500. So the good news is this, that amount still covers a single employee for medical dental vision, vision coverage with, with no out-of-pocket. If you have a dependent, spouse, child on the plan, there is a cost associated with that. All right, I will turn it back over to you, Tom, to talk about the new recommended program.
So there are, the idea of having, what can you do to help people get better care without getting into a complicated discussion with your unions about having higher deductibles, big plan design changes, benefit changes, out-of-pocket changes, things like that? What we've, what has evolved in the health insurance space over the last few years is an upgrade in the customer service function. Today, if you call Anthem, the person you're calling, their job title is Customer Service Rep. If you call Accolade, their job title is Health Assistant. They're about to change that to Care Advocate. So just the names alone show you the difference in focus of what is intended to happen by the people that your employees and their dependents will interact with on the phone. We are adding Accolade to the PRISM program and we're putting it on top of the Blue Shield platform because Blue Shield is much more easily integrated with Accolade's functions. The Accolade customer reps will see all of your members' data when they call in. They're going to know when they've been to the doctor and what meds they're taking and so forth, and they'll be able to point out additional things that they might need to do to take better care of themselves. To move to Blue Shield and add Accolade does not change your rates. We expect this to be cost neutral. We're optimistic that it will actually save money as people get better care over time. However, we feel that the conservative approach is to price it at a neutral standpoint. There are no deductibles, coinsurance changes in your existing plan, so you didn't have to go to the table and bargain a different set of benefits among the four flavors of coverage that you offer now under Anthem. The next slide talks about what the key elements are of Accolade. If you go to a cocktail party and somebody says, hey, what do you do for a living? And you say, I sell health insurance. Nobody wants to talk to you. They stop, they look past you and they want to talk to somebody else. Nobody likes to deal with health insurance. It's not fun. It's not something people are familiar with. It's not something they're comfortable with. The consequences of doing it wrong can be significant. The consequences of not paying attention to how the coverage works can be, can be awful, and it can delay getting care sometimes. Part of what the goal here is, we want to make it simpler, better experience for the, for your employees and dependents, more access to care. We cannot hire doctors and move them to Lake County. We can't, as consultants or as a JPA, get more hospital beds into the county. What we can do is increase access to primary care and mental health care on the telephone or by helping your folks get appointments quicker, sooner as wherever it might be available for a face-to-face. We're going to have more data about quality available to your folks, so they will get recommended to the best quality opportunity. And it's going to make it easier for your HR folks to cope with, with what is the calls that come from employees about how things work. The next slide is just a quick look at who all the people are that might end up talking to your people on the phone. It starts with the Health Assistant. The Health Assistant is the single point of contact. Your folks can call in, get the name of John or Sarah, and they will continue to work with John or Sarah or any of the other folks over time, so they don't have to constantly call in and talk to somebody new. Text is available. You can contact them via text. There is an Accolade app that will have all of the county's benefits in it. It will have all of the contact information for Accolade there. The assistants can answer coverage questions, they can find providers, they can make appointments for folks, and figure out claims questions. We know Accolade works because we have been told that when we have it in place, the health plans get lots and lots of calls from Accolade. And that's what happens is Accolade is sitting there on top of the Blue Shield system, and if something isn't working in Blue Shield, Accolade's going to make sure it works. There is triage and referral to the people at the top of the chart. There are virtual primary care physicians. There can be brought onto a call a registered nurse if the question is beyond the immediate expertise of the Health Assistant. If it looks like some mental health care is available, a referral can be made and a subsequent appointment made for a therapist to talk to someone over the phone or video. There is also access to other programs available through PRISM for second surgical opinion or specialized cancer care or specialized care for musculoskeletal conditions. The Health Assistant operates as the facilitator, the gateway, the enabler to help your folks get access to all of these advantages. The big question is, in changing to Blue Shield, what does that mean in terms of your network? We took a look at it and all of the hospitals in the county and all the medical groups are in-network with Blue Shield, just as they are with Anthem. There's no, no change there.
I just have a question. What about the others that are hospitals like in Santa Rosa?
Yes, they're also, yes. Blue Shield has a big statewide network that is comparable to the Anthem network. To, to help you feel comfortable with it, January 1, CalPERS is moving 450,000 human beings from Anthem to Blue Shield. They have decided that they are firing Anthem and they are moving all of their preferred provider option, all their fee-for-service people from Anthem to Blue Shield. They did a very, they did an exhaustive network analysis, and there's plenty of access.
So Blue Shield's expanded their network because it wasn't that long ago that you couldn't find a provider in the county.
Right, yes, they have. And we've done detailed location by location and facilities and also detailed doctor by doctor for the top 30 of both in, in numbers of claims and dollars. The next slide has some numbers, and I apologize for it being, the numbers being so small. The, this was 1,673 records that we looked at to compare the left column, which is Anthem, to the right column, which is Blue Shield. And the percentage of physicians in-network, it's 96% on the Anthem side and 92, it's a little lower on Blue Shield. And some of those lower were out of area. It was interesting, there are you, there are some like Southern California claims and there's some from somebody, a couple of people. Hospital facility on the second row down, Anthem, it's 96% in-network, Blue Shield's 98%. And ancillary, Anthem 80 and Blue Shield 85. In dollars is the next one, so physician dollars is halfway down the page, 98% of the Anthem dollars were in-network and Blue Shield 95, almost 96%. Hospital dollars, 99 and 99. And ancillary, meaning not doctors, not hospitals, so labs, x-rays, that kind of stuff, 86. And Blue Shield is actually higher in-network for ancillary than Anthem is. And then there's a little summary down at the bottom that covers that. This is, it is a big deal to change networks. We absolutely understand that. People are going to get new ID cards. The good thing about the new ID card is it's going to have the Accolade phone number on it. So they're going to have in addition to the, there's the regular Blue Shield service, but Accolade's going to be the primary point of contact. And their job is to facilitate the transition and make it easier for folks to find people and find care. That's the, we can take questions, I think we're supposed to do that at the end, but if you have more questions, we can, can do that when you're ready. Keep going.
So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the dental plan. So since I've worked with the county, maybe one or two years after, so probably for the last four years or so, there have been many, many employee concerns about Delta's network, about availability of dentists. And this is not unique to the county of Lake. We're hearing this actually throughout all of California, especially in our rural, you know, rural areas, but even Sonoma County is really struggling now. So there has been a shift in the way that Delta does their contracting and the number of providers that they have. And so what this chart shows is on the left is 2019, showing how many employees and dependents of Lake County went either in-network or out-of-network. So the green line is the combination of both Delta networks. So in 2019, you had about 95% of all people were able to see an in-network dentist and only about five were having to see an out-of-network dentist. Fast forward to 2023, that number has shifted dramatically. Now there's about a quarter of your population who is seeing out-of-network dentists. And what that means for them is they're paying a lot more out-of-pocket. So as Arandi mentioned in the beginning, with Delta Dental, the way that they, the way that their contracts are set up, if you go to an out-of-network dentist, the member, me, I go to the dentist, I have to pay the full price of my care and then I submit a claim and I get reimbursed from Delta. And so, you know, that can be very challenging for people. If you have a claim, a crown or something expensive, that could be $1,200 that you're having to pay upfront and wait for reimbursement. That's really tough for people and it is probably leading to people either not getting the care that they need. It can be very frustrating to find a dentist and so, you know, the concern is that people aren't going to the dentist and using their benefits. In, like Tom was talking about in the beginning, you know, access to care is such an important issue and, and in both of these areas, we're really just trying to find a solution that will help ease the pain that people are feeling. So we, you know, our, our role, as Tom said, is to try to find some creative options. And so what the, the main differences that you would see with Ameritas versus Delta Dental is that Ameritas will pay those dentists, whether they're in-network or out-of-network, pay them directly. So I take my son to an out-of-network dentist, I go in, they say, okay, we think your charge is going to be $20. I pay my $20, they send the claim to Delta, and then if there's any additional amount, they bill me. But I'm not having to come up with that full amount upfront. So that's the biggest difference with Ameritas. The other difference that Arandi talked about in the beginning is that they're going to pay those out-of-network dentists more. So right now, Delta pays about, what, five out of 10 dentists charged? So if an average dentist charges $150, you know, Delta's going to pay less, whereas Ameritas is going to pay based on what nine out of 10 dentists charge. So if the majority of dentists charge $150 for a claim, here, a crown, for example, in Lake County, that's what Ameritas is going to pay. So both of those things help the employee pay less out-of-pocket. So there were several options that were presented to the Benefits Committee. If you stay with Delta Dental, the increase is just under 1%. There were two options presented. Option one would be just to match the benefits exactly that you have today with the differences I've outlined, changing the out-of-network reimbursement to a higher amount. Option two adds a little bit of an extra benefit and it would be slightly over your current, but less than the renewal. So very small dollars, but it allows people to roll over unused benefits. So if I have, you know, $1,000 maximum and I just go get my cleaning, for example, and I have some leftover money, I can roll it over to the next month and be able to have more to use next year if I, you know, have a bigger expense. So you can roll over year over year up to a maximum. So that's a nice added benefit and, you know, it's pretty inexpensive to add that little change. And that was actually what the Benefits Committee recommended. So the last slide here, before we get to any questions, is we looked at the top 34 dental providers that the county employees and dependents are currently using. And we've separated them out here into a chart, so you can see Delta and Ameritas share eight of those top 34, so everybody would be able to have the same dentist there. Ameritas would add four more that you don't currently have of those top 34. Delta still does have more in-network. So they have 13 where they have them in-network and Ameritas does not. And then there's nine that are completely out-of-network for both. Remember though, the out-of-network experience is very different between people who are with Delta today and people who would be with Ameritas.
In addition, Delta, a lot of the in-network providers are not taking new patients, so any of our new employees, even though there's providers here, they can't get into that dentist because there's so few dentists. And switching to Ameritas allows that 90% of usual and customary, so you're spending your money more wisely and you can go to any dentist.
Yeah. Yeah. And then the last piece to that is that Ameritas will make a commitment to the county to try to recruit those top providers. They'll make a really concerted effort to get out there, recruit the providers, but while they're out there, they can also educate them about the processes that they have that they'll pay upfront, that employees don't have to pay, how to submit claims. So they're going to come out and actually meet with all the dentists and make an effort to get them in the network. And the last thing I would mention is that some of your neighbors, so Humboldt County changed to Ameritas last year, so they're already doing some of that legwork to get the more providers in-network. There's some school districts in kind of Sonoma up to Lake County who have changed. So the more, you know, as the momentum grows, hopefully there will be more network dentists. But in the meantime, the experience for those going out of network should be very different, so. So that concludes our presentation, but we'd be happy to take any questions that any of you have.
And I do need to point out, there was a slight typo in my memo. We listed it as 0.9 and it's 0.9, and 0.3 and it's 0.3. And that was corrected, but I did want to point that out.
Say that again?
So.
Does it sound like, to me, like you said the same thing?
It's a zero difference. So 0.9% was presented and it's actually 0.9%, which was corrected before the memo went out.
But I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out.
Okay. Thank you very much. I want to ask Supervisor Simon if he had anything else to add. I know you were involved in these conversations.
Yeah, absolutely. I did miss the last conversation I was having, I was traveling on that date. But, you know, the, the information given, you said it the best, making a big lug change like this, changing cards and other things, is always a challenge. But looking at the costs, looking at the opportunities, I think the, the committee does a great job of asking the questions, bringing up what's happening in their families all the time, what the experiences are, and I think they've made the right decision or the recommendation today. I do know that, I can only speak on behalf of one tribal organization, but I know there are current businesses that do use Ameritas here in Lake County and others. So, you know, I think the changes will be a positive thing that will be done, but I think the, the conversations that happened there at the committee hearings or the committee meetings are really important to help us move forward with this, so.
And I, I think we're really looking forward from an HR perspective of having that navigator to help us explore our benefits, help our employees use the benefits that we purchase for them in a more beneficial way to them and their families. I know, just being in this rural area, I was traveling back to the Bay Area to see a doctor, that became painful, but I moved here seven years ago, I've had nine providers. That's huge and that's a huge resource. It's probably easier for me to go out because I know benefits than it is our average employee. So this puts an expert in their pocket, in their phone, to help them utilize these benefits in a more beneficial way.
What we've seen with, with Accolade, they have a chart that's, that's pretty interesting. And it goes from how much health insurance spending happened by person, 10,000, 20, 50, 80, 100,000. The more amount of money someone is spending in claims, 85% of the people who are in the $100,000 range are working with Accolade. So the more problems they have, the more care they need, the more people, more of those people use Accolade. And we showed that slide to the, to the committee. I mean, we, we were, we were very conscious that it kind of flips that, you know, that statement that, well, it's not personal, it's just business. Well, health insurance is personal. And what we're trying to do with Accolade is make it more, better personal care than the traditional arrangement.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you for the presentation. Several questions, and they're going to sound critical and they're not meant to be, but I'm glad to hear the claim is going to be so much user-friendly. Everything I've seen so far doesn't convince me of that. So I want to turn to page six of the slide deck. My first question is that there would be no change in core coverage from our existing coverage, but our existing coverage has a matrix of a But our existing coverage has a matrix of a PPO 80, PPO 35, some with health savings accounts, one specific to law enforcement. And I see Delta has the same matrix. Under this proposed new plan, are we going to have just one size fits all for all types of employee classes?
No, the plans, the plan design, so you'd still have all the same five plans, no copay changes, no deductible changes. So there'd be a direct map from one plan. So if you're in the PPO 80 now, you would still be in a PPO 80. It would just be through Blue Shield, for example. So you still would have all five plans.
Because those plans are called out in our MOUs, they've been negotiated. And that's my second question is aren't we hovering dangerously close to negotiating a change in benefits, applying not just to represented employees but management? This is a county-wide change being proposed.
The unions were a part of the benefit committee. Every union was represented on the committee. So they took it to their people as well. And as a committee, we voted as a whole to make this change. So we are, we are not in jeopardy of negotiating.
And also I wanted to point out that we're not changing the structure of the benefits. We're just changing the carriers. So like changing like film plans, for instance. We're not going for ATMT.
I may beg to differ. So you didn't get into slide 22 and 23 in the slide deck in the appendix. But I see a heavy focus on virtual care. So goodie, Accolade will offer $0 virtual primary care, $0 virtual mental health care. I am in the same boat, you are. I can't keep a primary care provider, much less a specialist in county. So for the young kids and the millennials and the crowd, maybe the app and all this mental health assistant, I assume it's a live person, not ChatGPT, but I don't know that.
It's a live person.
Coverage amounts aside, I want to know that the modality is not changing. And it seems to me that what you're presenting here is a change in modality, that it's all app all the time upfront.
No, sir. It's in a, this is on top of the traditional benefit delivered through Blue Shield and the, and just the same way Anthem does. So the doc, if nobody ever used Accolade, after changing to Blue Shield, they would have the same, same benefits that they have under Anthem.
So you still have the ability to see, go see a doctor and pay your $20 copay or go into the doctor for your like routine physical. But in addition to your point for the 20, 30, 40-year-olds, even me, who want to go see, who want to use the phone or an app, that's an additional option I have. So it just expands access versus taking anything away. So it's just building on what you already have, if that makes sense.
All right. I'm still the new kid on the black as I lame duck out of here and I don't have any real knowledge of the benefits committee or how it's been used. So I'm going to defer to my colleagues on how this isn't a negotiation. But those are my questions right now.
Great questions. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments? So I will, um, I, I, I'm, I'm slightly concerned about some of the lack of information because it says most providers will be covered. And that most doesn't necessarily lead me to understand. Is it 90 out of 100? I mean, I know you had the percentages in there. But out of the ones that our county employees are accessing now that you might have access to understand where they're going right now based on the claims that you're seeing, what, what does most mean? Because some of it drops a certain percentage and some of it it climbs. Mostly on the ancillary, it seems to go up, but on the primary care provider, it goes down. And I guess I should disclose, I'm not speaking on the behalf of our local hospital chains, but I am concerned on the kind of potential movement towards more virtual care. We're, we're seeing absolute vacant areas, deserts in the state of California and many rural areas outside of California where there's no longer a hospital. And if we all start going towards Accolade and other virtual networks, how are we keeping our local hospitals engaged with us and continuing to, to remain here? I can't, I'm, I don't want to speak for them. I don't want to work for them. But at the same time, I have those concerns because they're already struggling in certain aspects. In certain aspects, they're doing great. But it's just something that I keep in mind. And you're saying, I guess there's one part and, please just know I have a certain angst against healthcare in general. Used to work in the healthcare realm, but I'm also a diabetic and healthcare is a business.
Big money business.
It is absolutely a business. It impacts persons, but it is a business. The fact that you just told us that 450,000 persons are about to join Blue Cross and that we're about to do the exact same amount as we go to Blue Shield kills me. That Blue Shield is not offering a better package than what we're already getting from Blue Cross. Maybe we need to wait for that transition to happen before that drop in, in the amount of the benefit package costs. But it just kills me that 450,000 people in the state of California about to transition and Blue Shield is going to stick with the same cost for the same benefit that Blue Cross is currently offering us. So.
And I do want to say that this isn't a switch to virtual. It just adds a virtual element to it for those that want to use that.
There's bonuses where you're not paying a copay if you go to virtual versus if you go to the hospital. You can access them wherever you are. Some people are going to need that here because maybe they're not mobile. Maybe they're bed bound, maybe they need access. So I think it's a good thing to have. But I do worry about as, as we get the Amazon of healthcare, that our local providers will only become less and less of a provider to the community. And I can't control that. It's just, it's just my concern.
Sure.
That it's only going to get more difficult. I, I, I do have a question for you and I apologize if it's a little bit in, in left field, but it's related to healthcare. Costs are high in Lake County in comparison to some other places. And part of that reason is we only have critical access hospitals and not general access hospitals. Do you know what the cost difference of our benefit package would be if we put a larger effort in trying to organize to get general access hospital here in Lake County versus what it is currently? Have you ever looked into that?
As in asking another hospital to build a facility here?
Something along those lines. Or a joint effort between the ones that are already here?
Well, I, I, um, no, we haven't looked into that. That's pretty much kind of beyond the scope of what our, our expertise is. We work with a lot of rural counties. Tulare County had a hospital close. And mostly the, the biggest challenge that the rural hospitals are having is that so many of the patients are on Medi-Cal. And Medi-Cal pays so much less than private health insurance does. And Medicare does the same thing. So that is more, if, if there's, the bigger challenge is really what goes on with the publicly funded programs where the private programs have to charge a lot more. There's 6,000 hospitals in the country and they all take Medicare and they all lose about 40% per patient on Medicare. And they have to charge 45% more per patient not on Medicare to have a 5% margin. That's how, that's how it works across the country. And it's particularly acute in rural areas of, of California and others. Central Valley has the same, similar kinds of deserts. Calaveras County, we're having the same conversation. They're kind of like you guys, they're east of Stockton. You're close to Santa Rosa. They have the same kind of thing. There's not great access in the county. And we're having the same conversation about can't, virtual is not intended to replace face-to-face care. It's intended to add to it, to supplement it. It is not a replacement for the doctor having a hands-on experience with a patient and checking their health. And we're not presenting it that way. We're not trying to offer it that way. We're trying to do what we can to make up for the lack of access of, of physical care.
Yeah, and one thing I could add to, or offer to add to what Tom's saying is, you know, the, what I'm hearing from Pam and the employees is there, there isn't doc, you can't get in to see a doctor. So they're full, right? So this just provides some other options so that those, those already, you know, those doctor's offices that can't accept patients, there is another way for somebody to get care. And in terms of the hospital, those acute things are still going to be done at a hospital. Really what the virtual provides is mental health care, primary type care, you know, urgent help. But the, the meat and potatoes of a hospital is going to remain because there's no replacement for that, right?
Yeah, I suspect in the post-Zuma era, we've all maybe had a virtual healthcare visit. The function of a virtual care provider.
Mike, please.
Is to treat something.
You can speak in the microphone.
That is reasonably managed virtually. And if you have, I've had the experience where I would get to a certain point and said, doctors say, nope, go to the ER. Nope, this is my limit. I'm not, here's what you can consider, but you need to go get a face-to-face appointment.
Well, I don't know about your families, but everybody in my family gets sick at four o'clock on a Friday. And there's not a single on-call doctor in the county. And so I have to go and use Teladoc and figure all these other options out so that I don't have to spend my weekend in the ER for $3,000, which is pretty much the only thing that happens in my house. So.
Exactly. The emergency room visit to replace healthcare cost us a fortune and this replaces that. I've had bronchitis enough times, but trying to call in to get in to my provider, they can see me in three weeks. Okay, I'm coughing out a lung. I know what this is. I just need a prescription and some cough medicine. This can be done over the phone or a renewal for my thyroid medicine. I don't need to go in to see somebody because that's, it's a maintenance medication. This just helps our employees utilize the services in a more effective way, in a more time management way for them, if they can. It won't place preventative. You still need at a certain age to go in for your mammogram and your, your care visits. It just also helps you provide, find a provider. If you can't find one locally, what's the closest provider to me? So that I don't have to take a day off to go to the doctors.
So collectively then, if this is going to be lowering those ER visits, when then we'll see that benefit in the future?
Yes, that could help. Yes, it could help that way.
So I think the most important thing is rates stay the same.
Yes, sir.
Whether we do the change or not. Out-of-pocket stays the same, copay stays the same. My last question, which is something that hasn't been touched on, I think I know the answer, but I want to ask it nonetheless. We have folks who reach a high enough position here in Lake County that when they retire, we continue to provide them a level of healthcare until they're 65. How will this affect them? Or is it the exact same impact that would occur to our employees?
Exact same impact as our employees.
So a slight decrease in primary care provider, but an increase in the ancillary and other things like that, just as we saw in the percentages. Okay. Yeah, I, I wish we could lower the price, but I don't think we're going to win that battle. And I appreciate that there's no increase and that this does, especially for the dental, provide some better access. Even though it is more limited in who does support Ameritas, it allows for the non-network folks to still have better access than the ones currently through Delta that we have now. So I, I don't see anything that's a, a red flag to me and I appreciate the conversation. Anything further from anyone else? Let's open it up for the public. Nobody on Zoom. We have a empty chamber. Did you want to say something else before we took action? Okay, bringing it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve medical carrier change from Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield with the PPO Navigator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. I. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Did you want to do it?
Oh, I'll do. I move to approve dental carrier change from Delta Dental to Ameritas. Ameritas.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor. I. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.